I'm turning on the recording here. So is Jesus. Jesus, are we on?
We're good, sir.
All right. Okay, notice hereby given that Willis County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the Commissioners' courtroom at five seventy-six with Main Street in Ramville, Texas, seven eight five eight zero on Thursday, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five at ten a.m. for the purpose of discussing the following items during the course of the meeting, any discussion of any item of the agenda to be had an executive referral session. Willis County Commissioners Court will convene such executive referral session according with section five five one point oh one of the federal government code. To any final action, final decision, final vote be required in the opinion of Willis County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considering such calls for executive meeting or session. Then the final decision of final vote should be either in the open meeting covered by the notice upon the reconvening of the public meeting or the subsequent meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court upon notice thereof as the county shall determine. So we let them then accomplish meeting to order. That chief deputy clerk, could you establish a call, please?
Yes, sir. Who would you proceed to one?
Present.
Who would you proceed to?
Present.
Who would you proceed to three? Absent. Who would you proceed to four?
Present.
I will tell the judge.
Here.
Do you allow a call?
All right, can you please stand for the invitation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the general public of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us here today. We invite your presence into our midst, asking for your wisdom, guidance, and peace. May this meeting be fruitful and filled with your love. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Maybe it's here. So with that, we go to line item number four. Is there any public comments? And if there's none, we go to approval of claims. It smells up. She wanted to move off, I know. But on number nineteen, are we waiting for somebody or can we do it?
Oh, it'll be, it can be after number seven, Judge. Uh, I think it's the, I would say after the, the.
But we're not waiting for somebody to show up.
Judge Coguera will be on.
Okay, all right, I'll just wait for him to come.
Yes, Judge, I'm letting him know.
All right, thanks. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve claims. Second, by Commissioner Figuerina, any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number six. Presentation and updates on Idaul County Drainage District Number One projects. This is a presentation we have Mr. Saseen, Director of the Idaul Drainage District Number One.
Welcome Judge Coguera, Commissioner Coguera, everyone. I've always seen you as the general manager of Idaul County Drainage District Number One. So we wanted just to come before Commissioners' Court and kind of give an overview of where we are in our major projects, I guess, that we're working on. Really, it's a twofold project, our Rainbow Drain slash Restore Act project that we want to brief the the court on and the community as well, and then the lateral G project that we're working on through the flood protection fund that we're on right now. So I'm gonna kind of, you know, my, I'm gonna turn it a little bit, you know, my.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sorry, I don't want to give my back to you. We can go back with. Don't go out the door with it. Anyway, so Willis, our county project update, so we have, this is, actually, this is a picture of our Restore Act. So Restore Act, as you know, was funded through recovery that came through BP spill and all that. So, you know, we basically are taking the existing footprint of the Rainbow Drain, existing footprint of the channel. It goes through Willisie right now, about seventy percent of it goes to Willisie. The rest is in Idaul, existing condition. It's not necessarily connected yet all the way to our diversion point, I'll cover that in a minute. But this is what you can see here, what it used to look like in the little inset picture there. And then you have the actual condition where it's at now. And obviously, we have the agreement with Delta Irrigation District to maintain it and so forth. So we're pursuing it and maintaining it. You going next, what you? Just for the benefit of the public, I always like to put this in. Obviously, the Drainage District is led by the Judge of the Four Commissioners, which is the Board of Directors for the Drainage District. We are a separate tax entity than the, than the actual county commissioners, but they do serve as the Board of Directors for the Drainage District. Just the challenge that we have, obviously, in our area, we have a topography drop. Water tends to move pretty efficiently through the system. You can see elevations as far as four twenty in Stark County. And then you get to center part of Idaul and the Edinburgh area and so forth, you see elevations in the seventies, eighties. And then it continues east, county line gets into the forties and fifties, and then out to the Guanamare, zero, right? So water tests move efficiently through the system, center part, and then it starts slowing down. So that's just, you know, we have a lot of projects in our county that we're doing where we're creating detention ponds and ditch widening and things of that nature to manage water, right? I think you have to take a two-fold approach when you look at drainage in our area especially. You have to do some regional projects, which is what we're gonna cover today. At the same time, you have to do some localized projects. You have to take care of the water in your area. It just can't rely on one major project, you know? It's a big hill to have a major project because we're able to manage a lot more water, but you have to invest locally as well. If you don't do local projects, then you're not able to manage water in the local areas, you know? The main channels do help you transmit water through the system. But if you're not doing onsite detentions or little ditches or things improvements in your areas, it can be very challenging just because of our topography and the way we're set up. So there, at our county in the Drainage District, we've taken upon ourselves to develop these type of projects already asked and things of that nature through bond issues and through our own in-house construction and improvements that we've done and partnerships with communities and so forth, to be able to look at those localized projects with the same time continue the development of regional projects. So the Restore Act, as I mentioned, bucket one restore money that we received for our area. We were contracted in October twenty twenty. Our time breaking was twenty twenty-two, so it took us a couple of years. And the historical on that was that there was only allocated seven million for our area. Seven million to do sixty miles, you know, less than minus of channel improvements, right? There was no way to do it. The estimate was thirteen million, third party, right? Hiring contractors and so forth. So I took it on ourselves. I presented to Treasury and TCQ our ability to be able to do this work. So we got certified by basically, by TCQ. We got approval to do the work ourselves, which brought it into, into a budget, within budget, right? If not, we would have, you know, it would have been very challenging to get this done. So we're able to do that, and with that approval, we started. During that two years, we were getting that approval done and everything, and then, you know, we were able to start the actual work and start the restoring of the actual channel. As I mentioned, sixty-two miles, we have forty-seven, Willisie about seventy-six percent, and the rest is in Idaul. Again, this is the existing original channel that they call the Rainbow Drain. It doesn't connect into our bypass, and I'll cover that in a minute, where we're gonna divert water in the future Rainbow Drain. But, you know, there's, there's a couple fingers that go into the county, right? So, but the major benefit for this project right now is really Willisie County, and from the very beginning, we've said that, right? We understood that. We understood that when we restore it, the main benefit's gonna be to Willisie. We started in twenty, August twenty-two. We just recently wrapped up three years of restoring the channel sixty-two miles. So we also are gonna have the maintenance that we're gonna do throughout the system, the agreement we have with Delta to shred it and so forth. You know, we're gonna have some washouts, we're gonna have some, things are gonna happen, right? And we're gonna continue to respond, and just like we do in the system that we maintain, this is the same type of approach we're gonna take on this system right now. So that was part of the commitment that we have to make sure that we move water as efficiently as possible through our area. So. So this is again another picture, a couple of pictures of the pre-restore and post-restore. That's the exact same picture you see on the left, the exact same picture on the right. So you can get a real good understanding of how it was before and how it is now. Obviously, with maintenance as we do, you know, our cycle runs right now. We have over seven hundred miles in our district. Our cycle runs about eight to nine months right now. What does that mean with shredding? Cycle, that's shredding cycle, not dredging, that's shredding. Just 'cause a lot of miles that we have, right? And obviously, we continue to grow. So as we've grown in maintenance miles, we've also grown the district in equipment and manpower, but it's still about eight months cycle. So we're not gonna be cutting it every month or maintaining it every, you know, within the cycle. In the eight months, we'll see the shredding come through. And that's in our own county as well. It's not, anything to do with Willis, it's just the system that we run, right? That's how we run it, and that's the average that we have. Rainbow Drain, again. As I mentioned, the restore was restoring the original condition Rainbow Drain. This is the Rainbow Drain that's been in the books and the federal government for quite some time, over thirty years plus. And basically, it is to divert water from our main drain through the new, a new system and eventually outfall to the Guanamare, which is the restore that we just pointed out. We are gonna have some new channels in Idaul that don't exist right now that will connect to the existing footprint of the Rainbow Drain, which is the restore. Forty-three miles of channel widening. We've got a two-hundred-and-seventy-acre detention facility being built in Idaul County, the whole water. Bridge and cover crossings. We got some diversion points that we're doing in San de Rey there with the existing on one eighty-six, there's a diversion there. We're gonna reconstruct that one to move water north of there to use it as a tension, and they're wanting fresh water to mix with the salt water, I guess, better for wildlife and so is my understanding. And we have a control structure at the county line as well to limit the water flow through the system. Again, sixty-seven percent is in Willisie County and thirty-three percent in Idaul. Again, biggest benefit will be Willisie County when this project is done. But it is what it is, 'cause that's where the water runs, that's how naturally, you know, Idaul can't change that, right? That's, we inherited that, that's, the Lord gave us that. That's how the water moves through the system, and we have to go through our adjacent sister counties, whether it be Willisie for our water, Cameron County when it comes to the floodwaters from the floodways and so forth, that's how that system is set up to run through Cameron County. And some of our water goes there because we outfall it through the IBOC floodway system. The only channel that's independent of that is the North Main Drain that we currently have, the Rainbow Drain that is going through Willisie County. Currently, right now, we're in the feasibility study stage, we're almost there. What does that mean? It's basically a report that gets submitted to Congress to try to get funding for this project. And we're looking at two auctions. We're looking at going section two oh three or two oh four. Two oh three is we would have the federal government drive the project with a reimbursable sixty-five thirty-five. However, we don't control it, meaning that any contracts or anything that gets done is through the federal government. When you get contracts come in, and if the budget is six hundred million where it's at right now, and the bid comes in at a billion, then we have to cover the extra four hundred million. So that could be a challenge, right? Section two oh four allows for the same type of reimbursement, but we drive it. We control it, we bid it out, we manage it. So the Commissioners' Court, the Board of Directors for the District has looked at those options, and we're going, we're looking at proceeding in the second option, which is section two oh four, where we manage it. We have the ability to control the contracts, local contractors, to try to get this work done in phases and cessions, things like that. That's kind of the line that we are, but we're still moving forward. However, before we get to that point, we have to get the feasibility report approved and submitted. And that's where our goal is to try to get it in by January next year, so we can try to be in the order of twenty twenty-six. And that's kind of an overview of that Rainbow Drain, where we are right now currently with it. It's still, it's still a project that's forthcoming. It's just, it's taking a little bit of time dealing with the federal government between the requirements that they have to get this done. And obviously, and the feasibility report is an environmental part of component that we're working through as well. Project area, as I mentioned, we have the different segments. You can see basically where approximately the appropriate segment is, is one of the ones that partly exists and over here by the Delta Lake, but the rest of it doesn't exist in Idaul, with the exception of segment one that's been constructed. But that is strictly where the diversion point is, but there's no diversion. Now, that's strictly local detention for Faysville community in that area. We have some challenges in that area, so we move forward with that, that construction of that system. And that, really, all it does is create a detention area, and then we pump water into our main drain. So segment one is constructed. Segment two, part of it is under construction, and that's it. But again, that's just localized detention. There's no connectivity to. Seven is not there, six is not there, five is not there, and so forth, and so. All those segments are not there yet. The rest of the segments are part of the Restore Act. Obviously, they're not constructed to full size, they're just there with the existing condition of the, of the channel is. You know, we're going three hundred and fifty foot wide, three hundred and fifty foot wide right away. Widening that we're doing for the, once we go in and improve the, the future Rainbow Drain, we're gonna be acquiring more right away to make it wider and so forth. Lateral G. So this is a partnership that we came with Willisie County. We were working with Commissioners' Office on this. He inherited this project when he came on board, sir, and we were already committed to doing the work. Essentially, this is a two-point-eight million dollar project. And it was a fifty-fifty, fifty percent water development board. And the fifty percent really is, it's, it's a reimbursement back to the construction of the district to doing the work, right? At zero cost, basically, Willisie County with the exception, I think you bought some land, the ten acres, I believe you, you funded that, that purchase, I wanna say.
No, actually, no, and you're talking about it on the letter G?
Yes.
No, we have not.
Oh, maybe we funded it. I need a check, sir.
I think you'll find out.
Maybe we did, but anyway, you know, 'cause the ten acre RDF, there was a quarter there. But essentially, it's, it's a way to get this project done with zero dollars to Willisie, right? And that was the agreement, right? Even though it's two-point-eight million and fifty percent of that is one-point-four that's getting back to the district, the rest of it is being covered by the district, whatever the cost is, you know, of services that are provided, that we're providing in-house. When we run the numbers, we're not, two-point-eight is street value, maybe we're at two, two million or something cost to the district. I don't know, I haven't run the numbers, but whatever that costs is over one-point-four million, the district is covered because it's committed to doing this project. That was a commitment that was made by, by the Drainage District and the Board of Directors to the Commissioners' Court. So it's expansion of about four-point-seven miles. We do have that ten, ten acre RDF, and I wanna say we've acquired that. We have the partnership with Willisie County Drainage District Number One. The final report was submitted to the Water Development Board, which is a requirement of the fifth, you have to submit that. Basically, you submit a preliminary, and then based on the preliminary, you submit a final, and the final is basically just confirming or documenting any changes that might have taken from the preliminary to the final report. And that's what we did. As you remember, Commish, we had some changes on some areas that we had to exclude because we were double, not double dipping, but we had identified our project, but then you guys had other fundings.
Prior projects that had been approved.
Right. You had some.
Still working on that.
Yes, sir, you had some different funding coming through, so we had to extract that from our, from our report. And so our final report says, no, this is being done through other funding sources, and then we're doing the rest. So it's all being documented, so. We got the final approval December last year, and the final specs and everything were submitted midsummer, and then we got the plan specs already accepted this last month. Right now, we're in the process of working with your legal counsel on, and our legal counsel, on getting some forms filled out by the water, for the Water Development Board. Because since this is a first of its kind, that we are the contractors, basically, of this project. They're wanting force account certifications, and they want some information from your attorney saying that this, this will work and so forth. So I've got our attorneys working with your attorneys to get all that details worked out, so we get those forms sent to the Water Development Board. Because once that is done, then we should be able to proceed to construction. It's just the paperwork requirement, like I said, the Water Development Board has not had this type of project before where someone's coming in, a local, other locals, because they're used to just put it out for bid and then award, right? This case, since we're doing this hybrid, so to speak, where, you know, we're doing the design and construction. There is only one request that the Water Board's making is that Willisie County has to hire its own construction oversight team. And we were.
We're represented.
Yes, sir, we, we have that in our budget, right? But they're saying, no, since you are technically the contractor, you need to have someone else representing. And that's the only thing that I see that is different, but everything else we're working through to fill out and to provide that information so we can get the unit in the water a little more to start the project, so. And that's where we're at now. Time frame, it's gonna be up to the attorneys. I know how, how much we can get that developed so we can get it up to the Water Development Board. Once it gets to the Water Development Board, I would anticipate another sixty days beyond that. Back and forth. We did the same type of thing with the Treasury, Department of Treasury in the Restore Act, right? So I feel confident that we get this done because we had the same questions come up with the, with the Department of Treasury when we were doing the Restore Act and basically being certified to be able to do this work. So I think if we get the federal government on board to do, to allow us to do it, I think we can get probably the state to give us the work, Willisie County. So I, I have confidence in that, I have confidence in that. So that's where we are on the, on the lateral G. And here's, this is the exhibit right here that we're looking at, the RDF there on the south side there. You can see the green and magenta. Those are the projects that were removed basically from our, so to speak, 'cause you already had something there. But even then, we're working with you on the possibility of doing some work for you, providing some stuff, and then, you know, us doing the work to try to save costs, right?
That's not one small section in the center.
That's correct. We're trying to see if we can get some boxes or something, some material you would provide to help us do all the work and everything. So even then, the district's looking at saying, okay, how can we help, right? How can we help to get this project done and get it to fruition, right? So, and I felt it was, it was important to come and make this presentation. It's not that we forget, it's just we got a lot on our plate, and we got a lot of things moving, but it's important for the community and for yourself, the leadership here to know. The commitment is still firm from the Drainage District, right? We've been very committed to doing the work. Things happen that are in our control, right? That we can't control what Water Development Board's requesting and what gets done, but we can't control getting that information put together and sent into them, right? And then after that, it's in their hands, so. It is moving forward, the project. I did have a conversation with Mr. Greenhill regarding, I guess, the overall improvements of the district and what we're doing, kind of again, some of what we've been doing. I think there was a, a, a study being done of our existing structure that we have at Chivas. I really haven't got any details on that, and I might as well double back with him on that and kind of meet with him. It was a couple of weeks ago that we talked, and I was supposed to follow up with him last week, I just didn't get a chance, but I'm gonna try to sit down with him and see, okay, what is it that you're looking at? But again, I firmly believe that you have to do both regional attention, regional projects, but you also have to, have you, you have to do your own improvements. Right, as part of it, you know, the district right now, we have several pump structures we're putting in. And when we say pump structure, seventy CFF pumps, large facilities, and we have fifteen that we're putting into the flood. IBWC's been permitted. It's just a matter of submitting the information and getting permitted, right? So it's, it's part of the process that you have to do. The amount of water you move via pump is nothing comparable to the gravity flow that you have, right? But you have to have some means to move water across when you have to, when you start, have to shut gates. In your county especially, the gates probably close just as quick as we do in the eastern part of our county, right? Eastern part of our county, along, you know, east of four ninety-one, all that area, a lot of times we have to manage gates early, even when heavy rains come. Not a diversion from the, from the, from the river, because that's really what the floodway is about. The, the, the banker floodway and the north floodway and the vertical, they're there to manage water from the river. However, we use it, and you use it as drainage for our, for our areas, right? However, because of the elevations that we have on the east side of our county and elevations you have in your county, you have to start managing gates quickly. Tell water gets in the poly channel, starts rising, and it doesn't have to be the floodway full, just enough full water in the poly channel, we're gonna start managing gates. So that's what we've taken upon ourselves in our county, to start putting structures, pump structures, especially on the east side of the county. Central part of the county, west side of the county.
Where are the gates located?
Yes, sir, you have to. And, 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 you know, we started the twelve-inch pump, but we, we said, you know, we gotta get something that is a little more, that moves more water. So we've been going with the big seventy CF pumps, seventy CFS pumps, which is equivalent, I don't know, six to eight, twelve, maybe ten pumps, you know, and one, ten. In some cases, we've put double pumps in the structure, depending on historic information that we have. So we, we continue to make those investments, as I mentioned. You gotta start local as well, you just can't rely on, on the regional work, right? I think we, we learned that in previous events, that we have to look at localized improvements to help ourselves, but at the same time, continue the partnerships that we have, to continue the regional approach to improve drainage and improve lateral ditches that we have. And again, we've been, the Lord created the way that natural terrain flows and everything flows from west to east. So that's all I have, that's it.
I'm just, I'm glad you guys are done with the repairs that we did on four ninety-eight.
Yes.
On that bridge.
Yeah, building up the bank, yes.
We have to build up that bank, you know, it looks, it looks really good. I saw residents out there, they're barely drying up since March.
Yes.
You know, all that water.
Yeah, that March system came in and it doesn't take a hurricane, sir, it doesn't.
Yeah, I understand, and I like the improvement. You know, I'm glad for that, 'cause we pump water out there for months, you know?
Yes. And that's the thing, we look, we have to look at, you know, our, our, our bank improvements, right? To make sure that, that we get them high enough, and then any lines that are coming in. Part of the Restore Act, we didn't have any identified cost or, not, excuse me, not identified cost, but any identified in the scope to do any type of down drains and so forth, but we're going back and looking at that, the district is, at our own cost, to look and say, okay, what is the down drains here? Let's look at these and see how these, if we needed additional down drain, why? Because erosion takes place if we don't have a way for the water to get under it. And then it's gonna get over, and then it's gonna create a problem for us, for all of us, right? So we're looking at those issues as well, bank elevations, what do we have to do? Down drains, what do we have to do? And a lot of times, it takes you guys reaching out and saying, hey, we have this situation, Drainage District, you know? Can we look at it? Of course, we can look at it. Let us evaluate and see which is the best way. I know when we reached out, you know, I had my guys go over and evaluate.
Yeah, I got with them.
And let's, and let's mobilize and see what we need to do, right? So we definitely. So, you know, I have Mr. Azabua and Ivette Barrera, my assistant GMs available there, and then Mr. Salasana, my chief of staff. That's our contact info, emails, everything, you know, anytime you need something, definitely reach out to us. I mean, Judge, you have my number, Commish. If you don't. I mean, Judge, you have my number, Commish. If you don't have, sir, I can.
I'm Dr. Foreman, the one that you had on that job, on that job site, that repair job?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he was really, he was really good.
I can give you my info as well, sir. I'm available.
I, I would like to visit the Panchita gates, I would like to see what that looks like.
Of course, definitely.
Okay.
We can definitely look at that as well. Really all I had, just kind of wanted to revisit where we're at and, you know, we're moving forward and everything, so.
Just real quick, and I very much appreciate y'all being here, giving us the information on the, what we call the North Ramville Drain. And then of course, the Hidago Main Drain. We didn't really talk much about that, but then lateral G. I think everybody here can attest that, that it was severely impacted March 27th of 2025.
Yes, sir.
With the amount of rain that we had and there was failures on it. I, I mean, we really need those improvements. We've been pushing on this for, for a while. We really appreciate the subbid. I think we're down to, the attorneys are going to look at.
That's it, sir.
Performance bond issues, whatever, whatever that is. Missing the horses on top of it. We're hoping today we'll be able to exchange some of that information so we can move forward. I also have the Water Development Board, they're also YouTube viewing this live. That way, if they have any questions and, and we can get this, this thing rolling forward in a hurry. So that was my, my comment on that. We've been working hard on it for, since before I took office. The first meeting I had here in December, Commissioner Lozada brought me in in 2022. And I, I think this really needs to come to fruition, you know, and appreciate the input. The only other thing is, and I, I don't know if you mentioned it, but I know there's some FIF studies out there on the possible funding for the rehab of the Hidago County Main Drain, Main Drain itself.
Let, let me, we'll look into that, but we've already taken upon ourselves to start gathering information and preparing plans for the North Main Drain. We estimate 27 million cubic yards of dirt.
You mean the Hidago County main? Yes, yeah. Not the north, okay. Yeah, that's, that's where Commissioner DeHiggy was talking about.
Yeah, from Panchitas east all the way to where it now falls right now.
Okay.
Existing right away varies from 350 all the way to 850. It's pretty wide. So we're looking at almost about $100 million in dirt only. At $3, 350, you know, which you should get based on quantity, right? The magnitude of the project, right? So you're looking at a level of effort that's, an investment that, you know, is substantial, right? But we've taken upon ourselves to start the plans and, and to start preparing that, to have that ready on the shelf. If something comes across that we can pursue. Engineers aren't too happy because 100 million project, 7%, that's a lot of money, but we're doing it ourselves. So, you know, we, we, we've already started that process.
We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we appreciate that. And I just want to emphasize since Commissioner mentioned that we, we're live on YouTube. And basically, Willis County has taken the same approach.
Yes, sir.
We, we have eight, nine projects that are local, right? Eight of which are through the Water Development Board, one of which is the one that you all are involved with. And some of them have been completed, two of them are through the General Land Office, and they're all having to do with local improvements.
Yes, we have to.
And so we're going to continue to do that. In fact, one of them is a detention pond that, that improves drainage on the southwest corner of Raymondville. And also, we have the North Star Park, which has been really an area that has been torn on the side when, when it rains a lot. So that one is almost completed. But needless to say, I just want to reveal that to, to the general public is that we're basically taking the, the same approach. And that's not counting the one that the Drainage District, Drainage District number one also has some smaller projects going. So I think when we put all of this together, it, it, it's going to improve the overall regional approach. Obviously, the, the, the big one is when you do tap into the Ramville Drain, the, I guess, hard hill areas in there that reaches all the way to Fabia, Fabian.
Placeville.
And, and so we'll, we'll work through it, I mean, it's like.
Yes, we have control, you know, we're going to have several control structures in that, in that new drain. It's all vetted through and, and we'll continue the conversations and working with you and our partners at the ranch and everybody, you know, we have to continue to work with everyone on this.
Yes, yes. I, I, I really do thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
For coming and making your presentation. And I know that more and more as we, as we move forward in the future, you'll be a more familiar base here in Willis County, right?
Yes.
We're attached to the hip, as you and I have had a conversation.
Yes, sir.
That is correct. And so we're, we're making it work.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I want to give you my info, Judge. I hope you have it, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you much, sir.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. I know that we have some awards today. I know, I see the district judge back there. This won't take long. I'm going to give you permission, commissioners, he's, he's on the bench right now, so if you just take a few.
My number?
Number 19, and that's discussion next to approve the jury selection plan for Willis County action required. And I think this is one that's under the district judge, but needless to say, it needs to be approved. It's required. And so that has been done. And Judge Cordova, you can jump in at any time, but I think we're good with that, right?
Perfect.
To approve. I don't, I don't, I, I certainly don't have any questions. I've been working with, with Veronica, kind of, she's updating me on it. I do want to say, since, since I have you here, Judge, that the, the, the pre-prau program, I, I really, really want to give you and your team credit. Priscilla, as to how it's working with our jail count, has enabled us to continue to contract out with the US Marshals. As I mentioned to you, we just approved helping out the neighbor in, in Kennedy County. All of that is attributed to your efforts and your team's effort to be able to work through the judicial process and in turn reduce the number of inmates in, in our county jail. So I, I just want to recognize you for that.
That's kind of you, Judge. And actually, it's you all that approved it, and I'm very grateful for y'all having the confidence in doing it. And I, I agree with you, it has made a substantial difference, not only, and I hope the sheriff will agree, in, in helping us move folks out of the jail, which costs us a bunch of money every day. But more important than getting to justice a little quickly, our cases have really sped up and we're getting to things much faster now. But I don't get any of the credit, it's you all for approving it and certainly Priscilla and, and Louise for doing a wonderful job. I just stand back and watch them shine, right? And so thank you all. Thank you for recognizing that, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, Commissioners, can I make a motion to, to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner, that's the second by Commissioner DeHiggy. Any more discussion? All in favor, we signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, sign. No one cares.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we go back to line item number seven. And this is, this is for informational purposes, not only the Willis County Sheriff's Office. We would like to recognize the following individuals for the service at a bee attack that occurred on September 23rd of 2025. At 14293, Emma Ross wrote, the 197th District Court, Bailey Gustavo Prieto, Ramville Fire Department Chief, Oscar Gutierrez, Ramville ISD Police Officer, Maribel Herrera, Willis County Sheriff's Office Civil Warrants Deputy Marcelino Flores Jr., Willis County Sheriff's Office Patrol Corporal Sergio Barrera, Willis County Sheriff's Office Chief Administrator Oscar Rivera Jr., and Willis County Sheriff's Office Deputy David, Chief Deputy David Robles. Before I turn it over to you, Sheriff, I, I just want to recognize the sheriff for, for doing this. I think this shows the true leadership of your part to be able to bring this forth, Sheriff.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you. That's an honor to serve amongst great men and women, you know, at the sheriff's office and our entire first responders community in this county, everybody from fire department EMS, everybody. They always, when, when, when it comes down to it, everybody responds 100% and they give it 100% and good things happen. And, and fortunately for us, this was a, a, a very tough situation to, to deal with. Not only with, you know, the act of swarm of bees, but having to help the victims and ensure that the victims got their, their medical attention as needed. And I, I, you know, I'd like to go into a little bit of the summary of this incident. We received the call September 23rd, as you stated, at 5:15 PM. Deputy Marcelino Flores was first on scene within minutes. As, as he was on scene, he observed an elderly male being swarmed by bees in front of an RV. And so he had quickly radioed that information to responding agents or agencies and, and other deputies. And he got off his unit and, and took the elderly male inside the RV and shut the door and kept more bees from coming in. He did request additional support. At that point, Chief Deputy Robles, Chief Administrative Deputy Oscar Rivera Jr., Corporal Sergio Barrera, Deputy Gustavo Prieto, and Chief Oscar Gutierrez arrived shortly thereafter to assist. The bees continued to swarm the area surrounding lot 18 and adjacent lots, creating a hazardous environment. Due to the urgency of the situation, it was determined that the victims required immediate medical attention. Chief Oscar Gutierrez put on a pea suit and he coordinated with Chief Rivera and Deputy Prieto, who were wearing rain gear for protection. To transfer the victim to a patrol vehicle, Chief Rivera drove the vehicle out of the swarm while Deputy Prieto and Chief Gutierrez both ran alongside the pickup as, as, as the victim was, was getting transported to EMS. They successfully transferred to a waiting ambulance. The secondary victim, that recovery, while that was happening, Chief, Chief Robles and Deputy Flores and Deputy Barrera, who were all wearing rain gear, conducted a search and located the second individual nearby. The same extraction procedure was followed and the second victim was transported to EMS staging for medical evaluation as well. During the course of the operation, Deputy Flores, Barrera, and Prieto, along with Chiefs Robles and Rivera sustained multiple bee stings. Deputy Prieto was actually transported as well to the hospital. And he was being observed by the medical staff there for multiple bee stings. I am pleased to announce that both of the victims made a full recovery. And I, I'd like to commend those deputies and for, for the services that they provided. I'd like to call up Deputy Marcelino Flores, Deputy Gustavo Prieto, Corporal Sergio Barrera, Chief Deputy David Robles, and Chief Batman Deputy Oscar Rivera. I am awarding them the lifesaving pin due to their actions. It was a hectic, I know, Commissioner, beginning, you've been to many of these bee attacks and it is, it is very hectic. And I'd like to present with these awards.
Make it part of the award. Staffed.
I think we can make the tradition of that. Add a special award name to that for me, Deputy. Chief, Chief Marcelino Flores. Corporal Sergio Barrera. Chief Deputy David Robles. Chief Oscar Rivera. Chief Oscar Gutierrez.
Yeah, I have some also. We work on. Let me start here. Okay, let's see. Make sure it gets you right, right? Sergio Barrera. So you can hang on the wall somewhere. Robles. Chief Deputy. And I do have here Chief Oscar Gutierrez and Police Officer Ramville ISD, Maribel Herrera. And I'll turn it over to.
And Judge, I'm pleased to and proud to give this to my daily Gustavo Prieto. And I'll tell you, if I can, this is the embodiment of bravery here in public service. Those of us who have been in a bee attack know how dangerous and painful it is. And I know that at least one person in this group had a very close relative be part of a bee attack just six weeks prior to this. So he knew what he was getting into and without hesitation, they went. Now I will tell you, rain gear, there's no protection from bees, I promise you. So I'm very proud to, to have these folks work with me and, and it's an honor to be with them. And now I'm going to hear about this for forever because Marcelino and Prieto are never going to let me forget that I said nice words about them. But they deserve every bit of them. These are very great men that I'm very proud to work with. So thank you all very, very much for all that you have done.
I also have some certificates that I've got for the commendation as well.
You didn't, you didn't have coffee this morning, Sheriff?
Didn't have enough coffee. I want to thank you, Judge. Commissioners, thank you all so much. Very appreciate you, Judge Cordova. Thank you, sir. Really appreciate you for your time, boys. And thank everybody for, for coming over and, and being a part of this, so. Of course. Don't come up and take the pic. Want to get a picture with you?
Sure.
Well, then, I'm.
You're asking us to go down that chair?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Thomas, come back here.
No, no.
See you good?
Yeah, all right.
Very good? Thank you for all your help, everything you do, thank you very, very much. Thank you all. Commissioner, thank you for everything you do, thank you for all your help, appreciate everything. Thank you for everything you do, thank you very, very much.
Alright, back to work, back to the soap line.
We go to, uh, thank you so much Sheriff. We go to line item number eight, discussion action authorized, police county sheriff's office to donate one Motorola A P X seventy-five hundred portable radio model M thirty T S S nine P W one A N serial number six five six C N P one six eight two, one Motorola X L T twenty-five hundred model M twenty-one U R M nine P W one A N and one Motorola A P X seven thousand portable radio model H ninety-seven T G D and nine P W one A, one A N serial number six five five C N B one fourteen fourteen two. The Life Alert Emergency Manager Conator slash Life Alert Volunteer Party Department, action required. So with that Sheriff, I understand that these are the ones that I guess will replace.
Yes, sir. They were in operation prior to getting the new radios and they still work. They just don't have much of a shelf life left on them. And I know a lot of our fire departments I did meet with several of the fire chiefs and they needed some, some equipment. And as you all know how expensive it is.
Yes, and, and this we, we, you and I had a short conversation.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff, Maria government, I know we were working towards inventory, right? Even before the new ones came in. And it's more due to not only the radios themselves, but also they were paying services for those.
Licenses?
So what, what the sheriff and I had talked about is perhaps at this time we can approve, I think that's a great idea by the way, to, to have these, uh, portable units or radios be utilized. However, we can also request or require an inventory of those agencies before we provide them with, with these radios. I think, I think we probably will be able to have a more accurate inventory.
Yes, sir. I believe, I believe they would be able to provide what they've got already and what is not working. They may have equipment that just doesn't work anymore. That's been kind of the conversations and, and that led us to, to this. And so, you know, they, they, the radios would be fully operational and of course the licenses would be paid.
Right.
But nonetheless, I mean, it's a desperately needed piece of equipment for communication. So Commissioners, can we get a motion?
I'm sorry, I got this real quick, because most of them have serial numbers, maybe they left this one out. But there's one that doesn't have a serial number. Do you think they can be provided later so we can make sure that, you know, it's that mobile or portable or mobile, I don't know, because it doesn't say.
Which one was that?
Uh, the one, it's after the mobile radio, the second one. It's X L, not X T L twenty-five hundred and then it has a model number. But it doesn't have a serial number like the others.
Okay, we will provide that to you.
Appreciate it.
Uh, we will have a, a list of, of radios.
Okay.
And, and that, and where they're going.
Okay.
And we'll have somebody sign off, most likely the fire chief, that they received that equipment.
Medical kits, medical kits to armored vehicles if needed, whatever, whatever we would be applying for. It is, it still belongs to the county defense and so therefore it's subject to get recalled back into their, their active rosters if you will, if the time was to come for them. But, you know, this is a bunch of different, different equipment that would fall under this, this particular program and that we'd be able to dig in and apply.
Any, any high profile people?
There are, and that is actually something that we're looking at for, for rescue. I remember this used to be called the ten thirty-three program, I think, back in the day. And so it's, it's similar to that.
What about the maintenance? So if they belong to the government, we gotta maintain them?
Yes, sir. Any kind of equipment that we would have to maintain.
And you're wanting to apply, right?
Yes, sir. We do, it does, it does require for those that would be using that, that, that equipment or the database requires it to go to an eight-hour training up in Austin at the, at the Liso office. It was a training, and so there would be some trouble overnight. But other than that, it's a great piece of, of opportunities for.
Motion by Commissioner Lisa Morano. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff. Line item number twelve, discussion and approval to continue the payment settlement for charges for crime victim liaison position paid by crime victim liaison grant. Forty-four ninety-nine three zero four, fund eighteen pending award, physical year twenty-two six, grant action required.
As you all know, I know RPA had, had brought forth something similar. This grant has been put on hold, basically, because of the, the shutdown in Washington. So we're just waiting for that to reopen and get everything going. I would hate to disrupt the services that are provided by my, my crime victims liaison. And, you know, I wish we would continue with paying. Currently, I know it's usually what, a thirty percent match that the county already provides, so.
Okay, I understand.
I think it's eighty twenty?
Eighty twenty.
I think it was thirty, no, twenty. That only went a hundred percent match one time.
Yes, a long time ago, so we use it about a hundred percent.
Judge, at the CJF meeting this last week, I think they told us that we should be getting those letters in the next two or three weeks. But they kind of said that a couple of weeks ago, too. So I think that some of the funding had already been released before the shutdown. So I'm hoping that this wasn't the batch of funding that was released.
Okay, but just so I understand what's before us. Are we saying that for the county to, for lack of a better word, pick up the tab while you get this?
Yes.
Is that what we were saying?
And essentially, the county actually gets reimbursed. So you pay reimbursements anyway. So it's, it's, it's never, they don't, they don't give you the money ahead of time, so you always pay it as a rea-, they always do it as a reimbursement.
So it's just for us to cut the team?
Yes.
Motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tegadina. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number thirteen, approve, what is the county's charge order to hold employee appreciation Christmas celebration at the Garcia Community Center on Friday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-five, action required. Commissioner, what this is, as you know, the sheriff kind of has your own employee appreciation.
Yes, sir.
And I, I think you've had it there before.
Yes, sir. Last question.
And as you know, I'm assuming that internally you take care of, of the county while you're having that, and that's why it becomes more of an essential that you have, basically, your own.
Well, we, we wind up giving awards and things like that to employees. And so we were able to put, put a little appreciation in.
So with that, and, and I think I briefly mentioned it just before, I, for Melissa. I think that the county's appreciation, employee appreciation is on a Saturday, Melissa?
Yes.
This is on Friday?
The sixth.
Well, I don't know if it's the next day or maybe the next weekend, but Melissa say it'll work out.
Motion.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item fourteen, discussion next, authorize what is the county's charge order to donate one Motorola APX sixty-five hundred mobile radio model M twenty-five UR S N P W one A N, serial number five-two-seven C R D two-six-eight-three, one Motorola APX seven thousand, portable radio model H nine-seven DXD nine P W one A N, serial number six-five-five C M R one-six-one-zero, and Motorola XTS twenty-five hundred portable radio model H four-six UCF nine P W S B N, serial number two-oh-five C L K zero six-four-one, one Motorola XTS twenty-five hundred portable radio model H forty-six UCF nine P W six B N, serial number two-oh-five C M P twenty-six ninety, one Motorola XTS twenty-five hundred portable radio model H four-six UCF nine P W eight six B N, serial number two-oh-five C L K zero six-four-three with four portable radios pouches and four radio charging bases, two community involvement, action required. Basically, commissioners, I think this is the last one.
Yeah, a few motions. I move to approve, as we deal with pending inventory. And the sending in proceedings.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Lisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number fifteen, discussion next, authorize what is the county's charge order to donate one Motorola XL twenty-five hundred mobile radio model M twenty-one UR M nine P W one A N, serial number five-fourteen K L K zero seven-one-six-two, Savarita Party, volunteer party, action required.
Same thing.
Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Tegadina. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number sixteen, discussion next, approve the local agreement to Wuishe County and Leiford Consolidated Independent School District for accessing, collecting tax services, action required. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
And we have, Miss Garcia, tech collector commissioners, as you know, we have.
Just one thing, it's not accessing, it's assessing.
Assessing.
Yes.
And so we have been working with the school district back and forth to include Miss Noposa on the actual interlocal agreement. Miss Noposa, want to add to it?
I've been working on it to get the statements out. I'm finally, I'm back and forth to Bobby because they either left something out, so hopefully this last, next file will be the correct one.
So, so as you know, commissioners, we are now, we have been asked by Electric Consolidated Independent School District to collect taxes for them. And so we're in the last phase of being able to do that, and what Miss is talking about is the actual statements or bills, whatever they're called. They go out, and it's this month that they owe money.
Yes.
So it looks like we're gonna be able to swing it, providing that we approve this agreement.
Just a quick question. Of course, a letterhead will be from the county, right? Kind of like, you know, send a letterhead, mail.
To, to the customers, the statement?
It'll just say collecting for Leiford.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have, they'll, they'll get the bill and they'll include Leiford, they'll put a little statement out, talk to the people that send out my statements.
So I, I think one of the, and I'm just looking at logic here. So one of the things that will be different, I guess, for the next pair is that instead of paying their school taxes, they'll, they'll pay them here.
Just to one spot.
They're paying them here anyways, right?
That's good.
Yeah, so they'll have to go to two different places. Some people go to three, so. Like Rainbow people, this is, the city of Rainbow comes to us now, so.
But I pay my city and county at the same time.
But not Rainbow I C.
Not Rainbow I C and, and myself. They still did it, though.
Anyway, I move to approve. Good, if you're taking.
Yes, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve. Second by Commissioner Lisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number thirteen, discussion next, approve the acceptors of grant number fifty-three ninety-six five oh one from the D J Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program in the amount of ten thousand forty-eight dollars fifty-two cents for the purchase of the toll unit laptops for the Wuishe County Constable Office, precinct number four, and we have Constable Viero.
Morning, Judge, Commissioner. This is a grant that we had applied back in February. We got notified that it was never refunded, or it's no match, it's a zero match. So, and the amount of ten thousand forty-eight and fifty-two cents. These are tough hook laptops that'll go installed into, into units. Equipment, everything, the labor included is included in this amount.
How many laptops will be purchased?
One unit for, one for buying and one for the constable. So those will be installed in there and have a, where they perform, as, as.
Is this the one we had looked into where the program could be shared by the other constable?
No, that was, they're talking about the, yeah, the.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Lisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line item number eighteen, discussion next, approve request by Wuishe County Constable precinct four and seven to approve the addition of one reserve officer position, increasing the total number of reserve officers from three to four, action required.
This is, Constable, I saw the question. We have, currently have three open, or three slots for reserve. And we have four people that had expressed interest in coming on reserve. The other three, I went back to the minutes, back to the years, and I did find where they were approved. So the Constable, I saw, just requesting to see if you can add one more.
And so I did have a talk with Constable, that says, morning, and he was updating me on the new requirements from Tico. And that's pretty interesting what they're requesting now. And I believe all this has to be in the minutes, right, to, to Tico, so they'll, they'll be aware.
Yeah, we were made aware by Mr. Minor.
Yes.
Your agent, yeah, it has to be in the minutes. The reserves, so, how many reserves you have, so.
If you want to go before, I think as long as we stay within the budget. And, you know, of course, we've already set the budget, so, you know, you can do what you do this time.
And you all think you can swing it with what we have?
I think so. I mean, we're just, I mean, they already know, you know, we, we don't provide, just, you know, basically a license and they have their own, have to qualify with them and.
I know that you're kind of speaking for, for Constable before, but so how, how is it working out with the three days? Is it a problem?
So what happens, nobody had really approached us to come on board. Now, there's been several people that have expressed interest to.
Oh, I see.
Coming on board. So we already had those other three, so we got four that wanted, wanted to come on board. I mean, but they already know, they've been pizza shift before, so they don't know how the reserve program works.
But you have a kind of, of a little bit of a job to do by the time you do your backgrounds and your fingerprint.
Yeah, we just want to make sure we have all our eyes dotted, please cross, make sure we follow the guidelines and, you know, as far as when we do pick them up, we gotta do backgrounds and do all that stuff, so that takes a little bit of time, but.
You're basically requesting from three to four.
Yes.
Then we're in the budget, I think. I move to approve this.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve. Second by Commissioner Lisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
We're at the nineteenth here.
Yes, we're at the nineteenth.
Twenty, discussion next, authorize to sign contracts, this first funds as needed, if they involve supporting employee appreciation dinner. Action required. Commissioners, as you know, we're in the starting stages of planning, and this is one of the things that we do approach with the church court as we move forward.
I move to approve this.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Tegadina. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty-one, discussion next, approve discuss point to issue longevity manual checks for Wuishe County employees. I think this comes up every year, and I think depending on how the window of, what's it called, pay, pay period falls. So what's your take?
Usually, I believe, included in the first payroll of December. So right now, I'm checking the date, but it's usually ordered to include the first payroll date of December, but I think that we're wanting it, if I read correctly, December sixth. The first payroll of December is on the twelfth. So I know y'all like to make sure they have it before. And I want to say the appreciation dinner, there was a note on here, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm not speaking ahead of time. So y'all were considering the sixth.
Melissa, do you know?
Yes, it's on Saturday, December sixth.
Yeah. Yeah.
So the date of six?
So that would be the full one, longevity checks. Are, because they're included in your first payroll.
So you're saying to do it on that, that.
First payroll of the other month.
Payroll.
Unless, I mean, I'm changing the date, it would be.
So it's the appreciation? On the sixth, because it's the appreciation dinner, correct?
Well, we have to include it with our payroll check.
Yes.
But it could be on the twelfth, or it would be the payroll before.
Yeah, the, I don't know, the payroll before is on.
November.
Oops, sorry.
November, right after.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, do we want to have the mic acknowledging the employee saying you have received? Or do we want to say you will receive? That's the question.
What's the next one after the twelfth?
Actually, the one after the twelfth? That would be after the appreciation dinner, that one.
No, I know.
Okay, just making sure. That falls on, when we're off on holidays for Christmas already. So it would be the, so that holiday, it would be, I'm not sure, is this early release, half day? Probably, if it's half day on the twenty-fourth, it would be on the twenty-fourth, Saturday, December.
Yeah, I would say they would need it before, before their holidays.
So the appreciation is on December sixth? Let me write it down. Enough for you.
Yeah, so you want before Christmas, but I know there's a twelfth. And the one before that, I believe there's early release in November, because that's the Thanksgiving holiday. So that will be on, sure.
Have we put that out?
Twenty-sixth.
We have to put that out, right?
It's November twenty-sixth. The twelfth is the regular payday.
Regular.
Yeah.
It's equal. Yeah.
I would say do it on the twelfth, probably. Do the longevity check on the twelfth. To give them, you know, you'll have your checks and you'll have, you know, your money for your holiday.
I need to include it in.
That's your motion? Therefore, motion? Yes, sir.
Okay, second motion by Commissioner Tegadina. Second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. All right, did you get that?
He said middle of the twelfth.
Yes, sir, I'm writing it down. Thank you.
Number twenty-two, discussion next, approve monetary contributions for twenty-two-five Zayn Haven to be held on October thirty-one, twenty-two-five, to be paid out. Community involvement, one oh one four oh one one ninety-two, action required. Commissioners, basically, I think for the next two, is basically community involvement that we have done previously. And this one is the safe payment. What I'm not sure of is exactly how much we had approved last year, but I want to say five hundred.
Is this the one, Judge Rossell?
Yeah, that's the one that she brought forward and.
So Judge, just because it says monetary contribution, it's not necessarily that it's going to be to participate and then, and then provide the items that are going to be distributed. So I wrote out a suggested motion that would be more accurate of what, what it would actually be.
It's just, what are they?
I'm looking into it, sorry.
And I confirmed with the auditor, and that was a preferred language to make sure it, it, it's a criteria of, since the general fund can't use, can't give out monetary contributions.
You're assuming the language for twenty-three?
No, twenty-three is different because that's going to be using the DA's fund fifty, which is the, the.
Oh, yeah, I didn't see that.
A terming drive.
For, for forfeiture funds, yeah.
I'm getting it.
And that is going to be like a.
Thinking it was three hundred.
I don't, and I don't remember last year, since this is a new year. Last year, you had, you had put a non-exceed amount. So that's why I don't know if you were going to consider what you were going to do this year, or if you were going to do it per event.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm getting there.
And so this year, so that, I don't know if you've heard that they're going to have it downtown. And so they're going to close off, I don't know how many streets, but it's right around there where the pocket park is.
Correct.
And people, the different organizations are going to be able to set up a table, and they're going to have it at Yogi's. So I call it Yogi's Pocket Park, because it's just, because I, I would want to make sure, they're just calling it the pocket park, but I want to make sure we give Yogi his due. It's Yogi's Pocket Park. So they're going to set up some, some things in there, too. But that's where they're going to have it. So they're going to close off downtown and have all the kids be able to go trick or treat there.
It was three hundred. It was three hundred.
Yes, sir.
The actual.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, and I want to say that Ms. Noposa is right, I think we put up to.
No, they spent a hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Last year, that's what we spent?
Yes.
We just need a motion on three hundred?
He's got, he's got the length, I left the number to.
Motion to approve Wuishe County Administration of Crime in and provide items to distribute at the twenty-two-five Rainbow Police Department safe haven to be held on October thirty-first, twenty-two-five, to be paid out of Community Improvement Fund zero-one four zero-one dash one-nine-three, not to exceed three hundred dollars.
It's, I'm sorry, it's involvement. I put approve it.
No, no, you put involvement, I read approve. I'll look into that one. It's Community Involvement Fund.
And I think you said one-nine-three, it's just a book check.
Yeah, it has one-nine-three here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One-nine-two.
Yeah.
That one you don't take.
On record.
Well, maybe. Okay, so I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty-three, discussion next, approve monetary contributions to Cups for Talks for the twenty-two-five Zayn Haven event to be held on October thirty-first, twenty-two-five, to be paid out of the DA's fund or available fund. Action required.
On this one, Judge, I have a line item out of my fund fifty that is for community involvement. And so it, it's just, for this one, I typically just do a, ask for a, a check to be made out to directly, Cups for Talks is a five oh one C organization, it's a nonprofit, and it's usually a check for specific, which is just candy. And then they go in, buy all the, I let them go buy all the candy, and that way they can distribute it as part of their safe haven. So that's, that's all. So in this, in this case, it would be, I'll also do the same thing, not to exceed three hundred dollars.
My motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Lisa Morano. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty-four, discussion next, approve memorandum of understanding to Wuishe County, Rainbow slash Wuishe County Volunteer Party Department fire calls, repair diesel fuel, action required. Commissioner, basically, where this came from is from, I think, the auditor's office, and I guess Miss Noposa is also involved, to come up with, to have something in place, because currently, at least, not to my knowledge, we didn't have anything. So it's not we're changing figures, or it can affect the budget, it's more of putting on a document what we're actually doing, right?
And I spoke with Chief Udiavetlin last week, and so I'm working on a memorandum of understanding. And so I, I would suggest, just so that there isn't a delay on this, is if you would, if you are considering, considering it to approve it and authorize the county judge to sign and execute it. I will, I am the one drafting it, because there isn't a memorandum of understanding. The amount is five, with the, the amount being five hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents monthly, that's the monthly amount. And it's for the fire calls, oh, yeah, the fire calls. The repairs in the diesel and fuel, that just kind of fluctuates, it depends on what that is. So the monthly amount that is paid is five eighty-three thirty-three, and thirty-three cents, excuse me. But I am working on that memorandum of understanding. It, it's, it's taking a little bit longer.
Put it on paper.
Yeah, it's taking a little bit longer, because we've never had one. And so he, he's working with me on, on what we need on it. And I, I will likely, because there's, there's several times throughout the year, and Commissioner Tegadina, you know, that they, that they come back for us, and they'll ask us for certain equipment, certain training, and certain different items. And so throughout the year, the way I'm, I'm working that memorandum of understanding is that we'll keep coming back and adding to it, so that way by next year, when we come back, we'll just have to keep renewing it. And by the end of this fiscal year, we'll have a complete memorandum of understanding, and we'll just be able to keep renewing it, and we'll have that all together. But we, the auditor's office didn't have anything other than, I think, just approvals from, in Commissioner's court of the amounts, but without any documentation, so we're trying to, to fix that. And really, it was just the way we operated a lot, and this used to be the, the case, it's just by gentleman improvement, and it was by handshake. And really, it's worked for probably, I don't know how long we've done it, probably about forty years, and it worked. But now, we've got to dot our i's, cross our t's, and our auditor, not our, not our auditor, but the auditor that comes in is required. We want documentation, so we're, we're going to, we're going to get that done. So, so if it is something that would be a motion, I would just ask to add that, to authorize a county judge to negotiate and execute.
But at this point, we're not approving a memorandum of understanding, because there isn't one, correct? You're working on it?
It would be to, to approve a memorandum of understanding, but it would be to, it would be to authorize the county judge to approve a memorandum of understanding. So you can give the county judge that authority to be able to do that, but it would be essentially to, you're approving that eight fifty, sorry, five eighty-three and thirty-three cents. That's all he would be authorized to be able to sign off and approve.
And that's, that's what we've been doing for the past, for the.
Yes, we can come back at the end of, in, in, in two weeks or so, to be. We can come back at the end of the, in, in, in two weeks or so, to be able to bring it before you, so that you can ratify it. I mean, that's, you can definitely do that in two weeks as well. But you can approve, uh, also the county judge should just negotiate that contract as well, so that way we can dot our i's and cross our t's. Uh, the way, if, if it's to approve to negotiate, the suggested would be approve negotiating a memorandum of understanding. Be, uh, approve, uh.
Proven, Judge.
Negotiate, uh, the county judge to negotiate a memorandum of understanding, and then just kind of read the rest of it. Do you want me to read what the suggested motion would be? To approve the county judge to negotiate a memorandum of understanding between Willis County and Rainbow, uh, and Rainbow Volunteer Fire Department slash Willis County on fire calls, repairs, and diesel fuel.
And the amount?
Well, that would be my suggestion, yeah.
You don't have to go to you.
Yes.
So.
I second.
Well, that would be the, the part of the motion, if that would be.
That'll, that'll be my motion.
I second. Motion by Commissioner to get in, a second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I would say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty-five, discussion act to approve the transfer of two desktop computers with Willis County bar code numbers, thirty-two oh eight H P F D eight hundred, G five seventeen dash nine seventy, serial number M X L zero one three one X Z N N thirty-three twelve D L fifty-four ninety-five five one oh five zero zero T. Serial number D four one nine F S three, ground auditor office two, county clerk's office, action required. And this one, you want to?
So these two computers are, were, they were replaced by the ARPA plant this last time around. And these two machines are still capable of doing some good, so we're gonna move on into the county clerk's for the code to use them.
Okay.
So they'll be able to access county records.
These were originally part of the ARPA group that was supposed to be disposed, but then upon, um, I T realizing they're still, you know, workable, and, um, we sent you computers, um, he decided, you know, let's utilize them, so not dispose of them, as they were originally, you know, approved in court for.
And I'm gonna assume that the, uh, county clerk is okay with it?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. They don't have a Windows ten issue, or?
No, they had, they had Windows eleven, but I wanted to replace the whole line between that department.
Good.
So, that's what's in it, so good.
All right. Any, any motion to approve?
Some, some to approve.
Second. Yeah, a motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I would say aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. For the record, Commissioners, she getting out, uh, has left, uh, the room. Uh, line item number twenty-six, approval, a travel request.
Uh, travel request for Nancy, also to attend the twenty-twenty-five related professional conference, to be held on December the third, with a big, on twenty-five, December the fourth. Action required. So, travel request for Sheriff's Department, Roy Moreno, Daniel Velasco, Felix Camet, Jr., to attend the proactive patrol criminal in prediction training on November the third, twenty-twenty-five, in House Texas, action required. Travel request for county clerk, Susan Argarza, to attend the virtual twenty-twenty-five G S H S vital statistics annual conference on December the eleventh, through the twelfth, some twenty-five, in Austin, Texas, and to pay in advance the virtual registration fee of two hundred and eighty dollars, action required. Travel request for county judge, Alberto Guerra, precinct one, Commissioner, Michaela Sanborano Alalina, precinct two, Commissioner, Mario De Hennas, to attend the Texas A and M Agri Life Extension Continuing Education Conference for county officials, on December the twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, in Laredo, Texas. Action required.
Okay, Commissioners, for the record, Commissioners, you're getting in, uh, any stand-in motion to approve? Second. I have a motion by Commissioner, by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I would say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number twenty-seven, approval, Thursday's quarterly report. Darubin, you're on.
Goodness.
Morning, everybody.
Good morning. I sent this attachment late this morning, I'm not sure if you all have it, whether it's on your surface or physically. It's just a recap of the quarterly balance, the monthly balances, over July, total bank and investments that the county had was twenty-four million, three hundred and seven thousand five hundred and four dollars and seventy-nine cents. And for August, the combined balances for everything was twenty-three million, four sixty-six, one fifty-six, ninety-one cents. And then for September, the combined balances of everything is twenty-two million, four sixty-eight, thirty-six, and thirty-seven cents.
So basically, each one is figured out three months.
Yes, the quarterly figure.
And there is action required.
It doesn't need to be publicized, so with the quarterly reports, I do take these to the promenade hall and their place.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I would say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number twenty-eight, a budget amendment. Do you have any budget?
No, I was gonna request to see it in the table for next month, which is.
All right.
Move to Jay.
Uh, motion by Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, because any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I would say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty-nine.
Sorry, can we go back to number nineteen?
The judge has approved, agreed to let it go forward.
Um, I saw there's an order where Judge Goldova is gonna sign. Uh, possible, can you make a motion to include the order?
Who made the motion?
Uh, Garcia, De Hennas.
I made my motion to include the order, number nineteen.
I made my second. I have amended motion, this is second, and second. All in favor, sign if I would say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, District. We go to line item number twenty-nine, prefer with Commissioners' Court legal counsel regarding pending contemplated litigation, B, deliberate regarding pending contemplated litigation and/or negotiation, the involvement of the county, imposed in interest. And C, prefer with Commissioners' Court legal counsel regarding legal issues of estate acquisition. Um, someone's already having it.
I do need to confirm with you first, Judge, before, before I visit with, uh, the Commissioners for this one.
Sure.
So, next Commissioners.
On line item number thirty, twenty, thirty, ac, action relative to executive session, A, B, and C, practical options, can I entertain a motion to take no action?
So.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. I'm looking at, any more discussion? All in favor, sign if I would say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Line number thirty-one. Motion by Karen.
Motion, Sharon.
I have a motion by second, uh, second by Commissioner Garcia, all in favor, sign if I would say aye. And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioners.